So we are recording officially.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sonia, can you say something again? I didn't hear you.
Yes, I said we could hear you. Can you hear me?
Oh, thank you. Yes, I can. Thank you. Hi, Deborah.
Hello, this is Tom.
Hello, Mike.
Hi, Tom.
Hi, uh, I look my, my computer, I don't have my computer, so I'm logging in by phone.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll accept your voice, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have three.
Can the person who's, Mayor, can we have the person who's listed as attendee identify themselves?
Oh, sure. Uh, okay. Uh, oh, attendee, who, attendee, can you please tell us who you are?
Yes, Jerry Alvalos, Jerry Alvalos with Banner.
Oh, hi, Jerry.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. And Scott Murphy from Banner is here as well.
Thanks, Scott.
Long man, no see, Jerry.
Mr. Jones, are you able to talk?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, let's see, who are we missing now? Uh, Veronica, there's Veronica, hi Veronica. Good. Okay. Sonia, are we waiting for anyone else?
Um, no, I believe everybody's here. All the council members are in attendance, the city manager is here, and so is the city attorney. We can start when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Let me make sure I've got the right agenda and... Okay. Okay, well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the city council meeting at the, at virtually, uh, being monitored from 520 J Street, Los Manos, California, for December 2nd, 2020, starting at 4:00 PM. Temporary public comment email established for the City of Los Manos City Council Meeting of December 2nd, 2020. Emails must be received by 4:00 PM. The city has established a temporary email address. Citizens can use to email public comments on any agenda item, limited to 250 words or less. Any public comments received by December 2nd, 2020, prior to 4:00 PM will be read aloud during the appropriate time and agenda item. The email address is cityclerk@lostmanos.org. Public comment during the public meetings will be taken in real time via email. Once the public hearing is open, the city council will pause the meeting in order to receive emails directed at the public hearing up to 250 words and will read comments into the record after resuming the meeting, as time permits. Please indicate that comments are for a particular public hearing by putting "public hearing" in the subject line of the email and the title of the public hearing. The council chambers, uh, the council chambers are closed to the public, and those interested in viewing the council, the city council meeting can do so on the City of Los Manos website. And that is a YouTube website, and I'm not going to read the, uh, the total, uh, uh, email address for that, or the total address. So with that, I am going to call the meeting to get, to, uh, to order at 4:00 PM today. And Chief Breezy, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Diligence to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, chief. Okay, let's go on to roll call. Uh, City Clerk Maloney.
Fariah.
Here.
Johnson Santos.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
Lewis.
Here.
Alalta.
Here. Okay, we do have a quorum. Let's go on to consideration of approval of agenda, item number four. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, and motion by Johnson Santos, do I have a second?
I'll second the mayor, council member, uh, second the motion, council member Lewis.
Thank you. Motion by Santos, second by Lewis for the approval of the agenda. All in favor? Mr. Fariah?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
And Valta, yes. Okay, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council chambers on any item of public interest that is within the, uh, the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers may submit their comments by submitting a written statement, limited to 250 words or less, or by dropping it off in the utility payment box at City Hall at 520 J Street by mail or emailing cityclerk@lostmanos.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the city council meeting. And Director Maloney, do we have any comments that are non-COVID related?
Yes, I have received two comments by email to read into the record.
Okay, would you please do that now?
The first one, it says, hello, Los Manos City Council. This is Stephanie Gonzalez with the California Health Collaborative, Merced County Tobacco Control Program. Our program has been providing education about the harms of secondhand smoke and the importance of smoke-free public outdoor areas. Did you know 75% of Californians support smoke-free outdoor dining? Outdoor dining, smoking restrictions protect patrons and employees from toxic secondhand tobacco smoke, which is crucial, especially during the pandemic. Research has demonstrated that COVID impacts the respiratory system, and being exposed to secondhand smoke may worsen symptoms. We are getting ready to launch our fresh air dining campaign in the community of Los Manos to promote healthy outdoor dining and encouraging local businesses to offer a smoke-free outdoor dining experience. We will be distributing educational packets along with window decals, stickers that promote smoke-free outdoor dining to businesses in Los Manos. Our goal is to create a healthy environment and promote smoke-free outdoor dining spaces while enjoying a bite of fresh air. We plan to launch this campaign in the spring of 2021. We plan to promote local businesses on our program's social media accounts, on Instagram and Facebook, at MCTCP209 and across the community. We would like to ask if Los Manos City Council or the City of Los Manos would be interested in collaborating with us to promote this campaign. You can contact me at 8-209-725-8240, or at sgonzalez@healthcollaborative.org for more information. Thank you, and it's signed Stephanie Gonzalez. She's the program manager for the Merced County Tobacco Control Program. It's part of the California Health Collaborative. The second, um, email is from Lawrence Mitchell, and it states, good evening, council members. My name is Lawrence Mitchell, and I would like to propose putting together a program that I believe the City of Los Manos would benefit from. Operation COVID-19 Mitigation is a program funded by the CARES Act and led by a nonprofit organization and currently in place in Oakland, California. This program would not only address some of the homeless issues we currently have, but would also address the trash we are seeing piled up, illness, substance abuse, and job creation for the people in homeless encampments. The program is currently helping micro-clean homeless encampments across Alameda County. It provides services which include employing individuals who live in these encampments, micro-cleaning what is left behind after city employees pick up the bigger items, providing resources for individuals, i.e. where to find help for mental illness and substance abuse, and teaching residents in these encampments how to properly use PPE. Individuals employed through this program would gain a sense of pride within themselves and in their community. PPE and training are provided to the employees to clean up disposed trash properly by a hazmat-trained individual, and then the areas are sprayed down with a solution approved by the CDC to disinfect the area that is made up of 35% hydrogen peroxide. The cleaning is done daily for approximately five hours and 45 minutes. Employees are paid at the end of the week with a debit card, which tracks where and how the money is being spent. Meetings are held on the days they are paid, that include a homeless encampment liaison, mental illness counselor, and life skills counselor. The homeless are able to talk about issues and also receive information on county services available. Benefits include, it provides money, dignity, and workforce development for homeless, cleans up neighborhoods, and helps mitigate killing the COVID-19 virus at its peak. Operation COVID-19 has been utilized with Alameda County DA's office and supervisors in various parts of Oakland, California. I hope that you consider this option as it has many benefits, and the cost is nothing to the city, and we are able to talk more. And again, it's from Lawrence Mitchell, and that is all I've received.
Thank you. Uh, City Manager Tarazas, would you please, uh, uh, provide some kind of follow-up for those two items?
I mean, unmute my mic, yes, yes, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, uh, do we have any COVID-related comments? Director Maloney?
No, I've received no good COVID-related comments.
Thank you very much. Okay, and so, uh, Alex, are we going to go to Philip now?
Uh, certainly at the, at the pleasure of the council, if, if there's an interest in adjusting the agenda to allow for Dr. Yu and that, that COVID item now. I'm certainly open to that.
Okay, uh, city council members, uh, City Manager Tarazas has invited Philip Yu, our hospital director from Sutter, uh, tonight to give, uh, to give a presentation, um, on, on COVID-19. And that can be done at the, um, uh, the COVID-19, uh, uh, agenda item, or it can be done now. Uh, would, would, would there be a problem if I had Dr. Yu present now?
Uh, Mayor, this is Bill Vaughn.
Yes, sir.
If you can do that, if I can do that, you should just go straight to number nine and handle all of the business under number nine.
Oh, we can, we can just do that?
Yeah.
City manager, okay, all right, why don't we do that so, so we don't delay Dr. Yu, and he can get back to his hospital rounds? Yeah, so if there's no, uh, uh, no problem with the council, I would like to take item nine at this time. And, uh, that is COVID-19 status update, City Council Resolution Number 6289, continuing the declaration, uh, of the existence of local emergency within the City of Los Manos, COVID-19. And we can save that as our last item, but, uh, Dr. Yu, could you please give us an update?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor Mike, um, and congratulations on completing your career as our mayor. Um, and I hope you enjoy retirement, and thank you for the rest of the city council allowing me to address you today. Um, so I know that, um, I think Lucy's probably putting up the PowerPoint presentation that I had. Um, and there it is, all right, great, good, next slide. So, right off the bat, I just wanted to reassure you about what Memorial Hospital of Los Manos is doing to prepare for, um, uh, this current surge. In the last five days, we've seen a fourfold increase in number of patients, both in the ED with COVID-19 as well as admissions. Um, so, uh, for a small hospital like that, that's already, uh, uh, you know, putting a, a little bit of a strain on our resources. But we have prepared for this surge, we've been waiting for this surge, unfortunately. Um, we have sufficient PPE supplies. We've actually gone out and gotten, um, you may be familiar with Pappers, those are the, um, alien-like hoods that we wear um, with a, um, a electron, electric respirator, um, that cleans the air for us and filters it and pumps it into the, uh, into the hood that we have. We've secured, um, enough of those to, um, uh, supply a huge portion of our hospital staff. And we've also actually looked into and procured, uh, new technology, so we have these things called a, a halo, and it's not a video game, uh, but it is another form of respirator, um, and, uh, we have those, um, boot, you know, we have those on the ground in, implemented um, for our staff, and they actually really, uh, like that instead of using N95 masks. Plus, on top of that, we have a healthy supply of N95 masks, and we've been able to procure that on a consistent basis. And, uh, moving on to treatments, we've been able to procure remdesivir through the help of both the county, and now that it's been turned over directly to, um, the manufacturer. We've been able to get sufficient remdesivir steroids, um, uh, convalescent plasma, uh, and just about anything that you've heard of on TV for our, um, our, uh, patients to help treat them. We've also stocked up on ventilators, and we actually had one of our ventilators blow out last week, and, um, we were able to replace that ventilator right away. Um, Sutter Health has a, a healthy stock of extra ventilators stored away just for this surge, um, and so we were able to get that. We've also gone out and bought, um, high-flow oxygen machines, uh, because as it turns out, uh, from a clinical standpoint, you actually want to try and keep, uh, COVID patients off ventilators, um, and if at all possible, because they actually do worse on the ventilators. So as much as possible, we try, try and keep them on high-flow oxygen machines. Um, just like to point out that one of our longtime EE physicians, Dr. Philip Silverstein, uh, donated enough money for us to go out and buy, uh, two more high-flow oxygen machines, um, although we already had them, uh, on tap. Um, we also have bought HEPA filters so that we can scrub the air basically, and, um, we've been aggressive in going out and getting surge, what's called surge or crisis staffing, uh, so that we can meet the surge head-on. Um, we can go to the next slide. Um, so just wanted to give you an overview, this is today, uh, as of today, uh, from, uh, the LA Times, which is a COVID tracker that I like because they like to produce, um, uh, graphs which are easy to follow. Um, and I just reviewed my, uh, presentation for our staff last week, and on the left side, you can see new cases by day. You can see that we've already eclipsed in California, um, our first wave back in July and August by far. Um, mortality, which is on the right side, or deaths, um, is also started to spike. By the way, mortality will, uh, lag behind cases by two to three weeks, um, because people get sick first, and then they, they duke it out with the virus, and unfortunately, mortality, uh, uh, that curve, uh, lags behind, uh, but it is also on a sharp, um, uh, uh, curve upwards, and you can see where, how it, uh, mimics almost exactly, uh, the first part of that curve in July and August. Um, and we are experiencing that, um, as clinicians. Next slide, please. Um, and this, I, I'm sorry, I forgot, I left in my slide from a, a week or so ago, uh, and, or actually two weeks now, uh, as a comparison. You can see where we were two weeks ago, you can see the mortality curve had not yet bumped, and you can see that the, um, uh, graph on the left, new cases by day, had not yet peaked out, or had not, not yet exceeded the previous peak, and, uh, but now you can see that it has. Next slide, please. Uh, Merced County, the curves are relatively, uh, smaller, um, because we're just, uh, you know, from a population standpoint. Um, but you can see the number of cases start to go up, the number of mortalities has not yet, um, followed that. Our, our, um, surge has been slightly delayed. If you notice that in the previous surge, we also had a slight delay um, before it hit us, it seemed to hit the, the Bay Area first and then wash over into the Central Valley, um, which is, uh, again, exactly what we're seeing. Next slide. This is, um, uh, taken today, uh, from the, um, LA Times Coronavirus Tracker, the one that I like to use. Um, and it shows Los Manos there, I'd, I'd point out to you that Los Manos has 1,719 cases thus far. Um, and, uh, um, and I'd also point out to you the per 100,000 cases, which is listed at 4289. And if you go up and down the county and other, looking at other cities, you can see that Los Manos has been lower than all the other cities, and that has been true throughout the entire pandemic. Los Manos has usually held a per capita rate of infections that is lower than the rest of the county, um, uh, which is a good thing, and a, a marker of the policies and processes, uh, that the city council had placed, uh, in pertaining to social distancing, masking, um, and handwashing and getting the message out. It really has made a huge difference. And also, um, uh, we don't say this enough, but it's, it's helped the hospital because we've gotten cases, yes. Yeah, I'm a knock on wood here, but because of that, I think that's what's prevented us from being overwhelmed by cases and running out of resources like ventilators, high-flow oxygen systems, and HEPA filters. We've had a steady flow of cases rather than a huge deluge or waterfall of cases, which is what, um, we in healthcare fear the most, um, in being over, uh, basically overrun with the resources that we have available. So next slide, please. This is the Merced County, um, uh, Public Health COVID Case Data Rate. Um, and I'll point out to you, um, the graph on the left side, um, which separates out by city. Um, and you'll see that the blue line, uh, not the light blue line, but the dark blue line, which is Los Manos, um, number of cases by community per 1,000 residents, it sits at the bottom of that graph. The lower you are on that graph, obviously, the better you have done in preventing spread amongst your community members. Um, the higher you are on that graph, the worse you have done, um, and more members, uh, more community, uh, members have, uh, have been affected. Right now, we are seeing a positivity rate in the, in the county of 9.6, in this, in the emergency room, our positivity rate this morning was 12.6, um, which you can imagine, it should be a little bit higher than the, than, than, um, uh, than, uh, the regular population because individuals are coming in with symptoms, uh, because they're sick. So we do expect a little higher bump, but 12.6, uh, to give you a frame of reference, uh, from about a month and a half ago is about six times what we, uh, what we were seeing about a month and a half ago, might be even seven times, actually. Uh, because we got down to close to 1% a month and a half ago, um, and then it turned cold, and then the holidays hit. Uh, we are seeing a post-Thanksgiving bump, um, as we, or surge as we would have expected, um, uh, and that is happening, uh, currently. Uh, next slide, please. Great, want to talk a little bit about vaccines. So there are currently, um, you heard that the Pfizer, Biontech, and Moderna, they have asked for emergency use, use authorization. Both vaccines are claiming 95% effectiveness. I've looked over the data myself, I'm, I'm very impressed. Um, uh, and so these are mRNA vaccines. Um, the issue is, right now, they require an extreme amount of logistics because they need to be stored at minus 70 degrees Celsius, which is 112 degrees Fahrenheit, minus 112 degrees Fahrenheit. Um, and, um, and they have a very short, um, shelf life after you take them out of storage, uh, or out of the deep freeze. Um, they are also both two-shot vaccines. Uh, the Pfizer needs to be given separated by 21 days. The Moderna needs to be separated by 28 days. Anytime you take a vaccine from one shot to two shot, it increases, uh, the complexity of the logistics, uh, and supply chain, uh, basically doubles the complexity of that supply chain. Um, but they, they are the vaccines that are coming out now, they're extremely effective if we can get it into the population. Um, next slide, please. So we have been in discussions, and you've probably heard from your public health officers, um, uh, as well as CDPH, but we've been in discussions on working on the logistics. Uh, high-risk healthcare workers are in Phase 1A, so that would be most, just about every, most people in the hospital. Um, if, if you want to simplify things, uh, will be in Phase 1A. Um, so right now, we're working, um, with CDPH as well as with our Sutter Health System, uh, on getting the vaccine and distributing it to those high-risk healthcare workers. Uh, next slide, please. And part of that Phase 1 distribution where we have limited doses, um, United States, uh, my understanding is about 20 million doses that will come, become available once the, uh, emergency use, use authorization takes effect and is approved, um, and, uh, then those vaccines will be distributed, um, uh, initially to, um, healthcare settings, um, especially where, um, uh, staff have to have direct or indirect exposure to patients or infectious materials, um, and, uh, in order to perform their job. Next slide, please. Uh, just a few facts about the Pfizer vaccine. Um, yeah, as I mentioned, it is to be stored at really, really low temperatures. Um, if, um, if you take it out of the refrigerator and you do what we call reconstitute, which is basically mix, uh, the vaccine so that now you can use it, you've got to use it within six hours. Within, if you don't use it, you'll lose it, um, and you can't, you can't put it back into the deep freeze. Once you've, uh, reconstituted, you've got to use that vaccine. It's going to be on short supply, um, even though... Um, even though we've got about two hundred and fifty employees and another hundred physicians uh on staff, um, we probably won't get enough vaccine to cover the entire population that eh eh on this first run uh that we anticipate. And we do anticipate getting vaccine before the year uh year is out. Um, uh, but it's gonna be a while before um Phase One A uh reaches completion, um at which point um they will then start Phase One B and then Two A, Two B, and so forth and so on. Next slide, please. All right. So just wanted to encourage you, eh eh we've been, you know, and eh eh thank goodness you don't have to experience this on an everyday basis, but I experience it on an everyday basis. And and we've been winning the fight for many of our patients. Yes, we've lost patients. Um, but um we've been, we've been working extremely hard and uh and a lot of our patients have actually made it through this. And so something that I've been telling my teams, eh actually even before the coronavirus uh uh even was a blip on our radar screen, is not shrink our dreams, but to supersize our courage and our abilities. And this pandemic, we certainly have supersized our courage and our abilities. The staff has shown up. They have done their work. They've put on their PPE. They have walked into those rooms. Um, eh and they have done everything they possibly could to help the eh each and every one of our patients um survive this um whenever possible. Um, by the way, um last week or I think it was last week or the week before, um we were on Univision um uh in the Spanish language uh station, um and uh um uh talking about how uh we had used our um uh Sutter resource called the Electronic ICU that every day we round with. Um, and they give us uh um uh intensivist physicians who are experts at um ventilator management. Um, and they round with us on on an everyday basis um to further uh 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 augment our abilities and really help us um deliver top-notch care here at Memorial Hospital Los Batos. With that, I'll stop and uh take any questions you might have.
Well, thank you, Dr. Yu. And uh let me start out with Mr. Friar. Do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, mayor, uh uh if we, if the whole county was where Los Batos is as far as infection rate, would we be in the same tier we are now or would be, would we be in a lower tier as a county?
We'd be on the, we'd be in the same tier because of the positivity rate being higher than I think the threshold, which I forget, might be eight percent. Um, but a lot better off. We'd be a lot closer to having stayed eh in the red tier and have had had a much better chance. Um, that's me just taking a first blush look. I haven't actually looked at the at the the numbers of uh of all the other uh towns and cities um and then done a a comparable computation of what it would take um to to have stayed in the red. But I I bet we, if everybody was like Los Batos, we would have had a pretty good shot at it.
All right. Thank you very much. And thanks for the great presentation. Mr. Santos, any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, but I wanted to, um, you were speaking about the logistical issues of the the refrigeration. Um, are those, are those freezers something that we currently have in stock or is that something that is trying to be rushed out?
Yeah, so here's the good news. Um, we foresaw this months ago, so Sutter Health and 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 I'm part of that system. So I I pinged a bunch of people in pharmacy and said, hey, are you going out and buying these freezers? And luckily, um, they did actually go out and buy those freezers. So we actually have thirteen freezers in hand. The closest one, and we distribute them throughout the Sutter Health footprint. So our closest one will be at Memorial Modesto, um which is just a stone's throw away um so that we can easily utilize their freezer, bring stuff, bring uh supplies over should we need it, um and send it back if we need to refreeze it. So we've worked out that logistics, um whereas others may not have. Um, so good, great question, and uh I'm glad you asked that.
Gotcha. Um, so I guess, for instance, say if it is in uh the uh Memorial Modesto, would um transferring over wouldn't start the time limit, right? You said it's after reconstitution, correct?
Correct. Yes, you're, you got, you hit the nail on the head. So when it comes over, it'll come over in what's called a Pfizer pizza box. That's literally what they called it, um uh with um dry ice in it. And then if it comes over in that box, we actually have five days if we leave it in the box um to to utilize the vaccine. Then when we pull out the vaccine, um when we take it out of the box, um we've, it'll take about eh uh an hour to thaw. And then when we inject the um normal saline into it, we now have a six-hour window to use that vaccine.
Nice, nice, okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Jones? Any questions?
Hi, Dr. Lou. Yes, I do. Hi, Dr. Lou. Hey, Brett. Some questions, uh regarding the tracking method for COVID. Um, do you believe the COVID tracking method, method that is being used is the best way to track COVID cases?
Um, so, you know, the the tracking method right now, it 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 lags a little bit behind. So the data always is a a little bit behind from where we actually have it. Um, from what I've seen and what we've tried to go to in the past, this is probably the best way to do it right now. And um uh when we report out statistics, they're usually seven-day uh running averages. Um, so it gives you a sense of where you're headed and it gives you a rate of what direction you're going in. So I think it works very well from a tracking method standpoint. Um, and uh um and it's been very helpful from from my viewpoint as a physician and clinician.
Okay, so let me ask you another question here. If I was to test positive for COVID, three days in a row, is each positive test counted as a new case?
You know, that's probably something that that public health could answer. Um, I don't know the answer to that specific question, whether or not you're tracked as three independent cases or one case. Um, uh, so I I just don't know the answer to that. Apologize.
Okay. And do you know if in US history, if there's been any other viruses tracked the same way as COVID?
Uh, let's see. Well, I know that um influenza is actually tracked uh um via the CDC in a very similar method. You can actually go on the CDC website and pull up influenza data week by week. Um, in fact, we track that um uh uh on, and I've been tracking that as well to see if uh uh eh if there have been influenza outbreaks. Fortunately, right now, influenza or flu has had actually fairly low activity, um probably because of all the measures that we've been taking and the decrease in travel. Um, but that is a a a very comparable way, and we do that every, the CDC does that every single year, tracks the influenza virus, um and uh we report all those cases.
All right. And the last question I have, in your opinion, does having a statewide curfew make a difference in preventing COVID cases?
Yeah, I think it's-
That's a little bit of a loaded question.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit more about, you know, are are people gathering? Because, you know, um eh eh curfews are are telling people to go home at a certain period of time is very different than um, you know, just having people comply with not gathering eh with households that are outside their household, especially when the positivity rate is as high as it is. So the example I would give here is that um when you get three families together, let's say there are four people in each family and there are still, they still gotta go to work and do their thing. You're gonna have one to two people that actually have COVID at that time, uh the potential uh to spread that. Um, I don't know if statewide curfews work. Um, I, you know, I I there's, there isn't probably any data on eh those that limiting the spread of disease. It's clearly about, do you have events where people gather together? Um, and are uh uh within that close proximity to each other, not wearing masks, maybe not doing the hand hygiene that they need to do. And that becoming clearly this, the uh spread events that have uh been documented and that are well-known. By the way, I'd just like to point out one more thing. Um, from a hospital perspective, people have asked me, does the PPE? It doesn't work, Dr. Yu. Doesn't work. I would say, um, actually, from my statistical viewpoint, it works tremendously well. Otherwise, my entire staff would have been out very early on because we have been taking care of COVID patients left and right. Um, uh, you know, I've been in ICU rooms. I've been in people, in rooms that uh where people are are quite ill, very ill, extremely ill, um eh wearing my PPE. Um, and um I know that from my viewpoint at eh working at two different hospitals, um, this stuff works. Um, we can protect ourselves until we get the vaccine.
So with with all the PPE that's being used, what's your opinion on um, I guess the term, uh herd immunity?
Yeah, so-
Does that work or does it doesn't work? Does it not work?
Absolutely. Herd immunity is a well, well-known concept. It absolutely works. Um, and it's been proven uh uh over and over again. I'll I'll, you know, um, there are many examples of uh excellent herd immunity. Um, a vaccine that has, by the way, ninety-five percent effectiveness will, um eh if you're able to get it to more and more people, it will de- help you develop that herd immunity.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Yu.
Thanks, Brett.
This is Louis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Dr. Yu, a couple of questions. Um, the age group of eighteen to forty-nine uh seems to be the highest symptomatic group in our county and uh the death rate is generally people sixty-five and older who are dying. Um, from the time of of the, the group of eighteen to forty-nine, generally, what is the timeframe from the time that they're exposed to a virus that they become symptomatic? Because some people aren't symptomatic at all, and there are a few that are symptomatic in in some way or form.
Yeah, so most people come, become symptomatic at day number five. Um, that's the most traditional day. Um, but you can become symptomatic between days number two and fourteen. A lot of uh young, healthy individuals may be asymptomatic carriers, so they may never become symptomatic. Um, and um that has actually been a common theme amongst the spread. When we have serious cases, we have met other individuals in that family who eh through um either family gatherings or other gatherings or having to go to work, um came home or asymptomatic. I've had several cases where they were told, oh, somebody else at work was sick, so they got tested. They came back positive, did not believe the test, went home, their family member uh 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 got ill and was hospitalized. Um, and typically, it's around day number five after exposure that you will uh develop those symptoms. Eh eh eh, you brought out a a very important statistic. Um, the the um younger age groups do have a much, much lower mortality. Um, the uh sixty-five and older age groups have a very high mortality. Um, they tend to have other comorbid conditions, um and their immune systems may not be able to f- to ward off this virus as effectively. Um, and so um oftentimes, the stories that we have seen, uh the tragic stories that we have seen is the child bringing it home to mom, mom getting really ill. Um, I've seen that over and over again, um and uh eh resulting in in uh some really tragic consequences.
And uh with that said, is there anything that uh personally you recommend uh for our city since you see patients that live in the city of Los Batos and surrounding areas that could better help this council? Um, uh, perhaps not necessarily control, but educate our public until there's a vaccine that everyone can take. Uh, because there, you know, there are people who just don't seem to get it. And um, you know, we've become a selfish nation where we don't consider other people's health, even though we may be healthy. And that disturbs me, that, you know, people have gotten to the point where it's all about them and not about the group as a whole. So I was just wondering, is there anything that you can recommend to this council or the city uh that we may further our education in our community beyond what the county is doing? Because sometimes I I really don't feel like the county is putting forth a really big effort to combat this this problem that we have in in Merced County.
Yeah, you know, I I I'd just like to to compliment the Los Batos City Council because the measures that you guys put in all the way back, I believe in April, that really um stemmed the tide for a long period of time and made a huge difference in the number of cases that occurred. Um, also kept it so that, because we were always gonna get cases, eh eh, let's be realistic. And the social distancing, the masking early, especially in um uh 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 public places like stores. And um uh when you go to Target, I noticed every time I go to Target or Walmart, they actually had somebody out there cleaning the carts. I go to Save Mart, they got, they have a a a nice young man cleaning the cart with a mask on, and um they won't let you in without the mask. Um, uh, when I walked into Target, I saw uh uh one of the Target uh um employees actually asked somebody to wear the mask properly, because if you don't wear the mask properly, what's the point? Um, and um those things have really eh, when they're used of consistently, they become extremely effective at reducing the rates. Now, most of eh eh if you went back and looked at each of these cases that are coming out now, you're gonna find significant family uh 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 gatherings. Or um eh eh as I mentioned, a case where somebody had to go to work, they came back, they got other family members um uh infected, um and it's spread that way. And if one of those family members then goes to another gathering, that is one of the really big uh 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 methods of spread. So I eh eh this may sound eh again draconian and difficult to do, uh but encouraging families right now to stay in their their sort of uh um uh bubble uh will uh be able to help uh cut down on those infections um until we get through this uh crisis and we get to vaccine. I I really strongly, and I've said this to a lot of our staff, we gotta get to vaccine. That's when eh eh we'll get to that herd immunity. Um, and we'll start seeing the infections go down, the death rate go down, the risk go down, and our communities start to be able to um finally catch their breath and get back to um all the things that we need to do.
Okay. And and just a little bit of side information uh for you. Uh, this council also a few months back passed a co- uh shopping cart ordinance washing uh for our uh businesses in Los Batos. So yeah, and I'm really happy. And when I shop, I I see staff wiping down carts in addition to that, but I had noticed that uh places like Walmart and other areas that their shopping carts are a lot cleaner now as a result of that ordinance that we passed. So it's it's like a a little bit of additional help and that will not go away even when COVID, COVID becomes um in a more controlled uh situation as a result of the vaccine. Uh, we just try to think of things to enhance our community, to make it safer for everyone um so that we can uh strengthen uh the ability for people not to get sick and for them not to end up in your facility behind this virus. But uh thank you for your education this this uh evening on your uh what's happening in our city with COVID and what you're doing in your hospital. And I'm happy to hear that your staff uh has some upgraded, enhanced uh uh protection that they wear uh during this crisis. That that's good for them and it makes them feel much more secure, I'm sure. Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Yu, so these family gatherings are usually uh different families get together without masking and because there's probably food involved. Would that be a correct assumption?
Yeah. Yes, and and especially Thanksgiving and and not as, and they're all related, right? Um, that's actually when we let our guard down the most, unfortunately.
So the worry of a PPE in 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 any form, uh when when both people have that, it's gonna cut down significantly on the uh on the number of cases or the transmission. Would that still be a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay. And eh eh the last question I have would be the uh the flu shot. If people are getting a flu shot, is there a time uh period that you have to wait in order to uh to uh uh have the uh COVID nineteen uh uh vaccine uh injected?
Um, at this point, they don't have a recommendation on that specifically, so I asked. Um, uh, but there's no recommendation, like if you get your flu shot, you gotta wait a couple of weeks. They don't have any of that. Um, they just don't know. I would actually recommend people get their flu shot now so that when the COVID vaccine does become available- I would actually recommend people get their flu shot now so that when the COVID vaccine does become available, if there is some sort of issue with that, it no longer becomes an issue for that individual person because they got their flu shot early on. The other part of that is that why I would recommend the flu shot. If it prevents people from getting the flu, they're less likely to get a double infection, number one. But also, if a lot of, if the flu becomes, you know, endemic or pandemic in the area, it's going to be very confusing to try and differentiate flu individuals from COVID individuals. And then the last part is, flu does this to us every year, just not at the level of COVID. We see flu pneumonias, flu ICU patients every single year at a fairly good clip around this time, heading all the way into the beginning of April. So if we are able to cut down on the number of those cases, it increases the resources and bandwidth that we have to be able to take care of COVID patients.
Thank you. And then one last question that's not COVID-related. The, so for some people who get the shingle shot and and they get the flu shot, is there is there a time lapse between, is there a time period between those?
That I don't know.
Okay, all right. Okay, because I'm just trying to cover all the bases for all for the public, you know, of any age. And and to make sure that when we finally roll out all these vaccines, that people have all the information and the questions that they can be knowledgeable to ask when they when they go get these injections.
Yeah, appreciate it.
So staff, are there any questions? Alex, you or your department heads, are there any questions that you would like to ask?
I don't, I don't think I have any questions, Mayor. I just just would like to remind you and the council, there's also the Resolution six-two-eight-nine as part of this item.
Yeah, got that.
Nothing else from staff, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Well, Dr. Yu, I can't thank you enough. Alex, thank you for inviting him this evening. And we hope to have you back on a regular basis just to give us some informative updates as you've done tonight to make sure that we're getting the firsthand information. And and so thank you for all that your hospital has done. I know you saved many lives. And, you know, we couldn't save everyone, but, you know, and that's the one that basically, you know, you don't want that to be your relative. And and so so thank you, thank you so much. And if there's anything else that we can do or any suggestions that you have, please contact our city manager, and we can certainly, we can certainly talk about that.
Definitely. Thank you for your support. Bye, everybody.
Goodbye. Good night, Dr. Yu. All right, so let's go on to City Council Resolution number six-two-eight-nine as read previously. Is there, there any discussion on our staff report?
Very briefly, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Just going back to the presentation very quickly. I think we're very fortunate to have the resources of center health here in our community. And I think the presentation that we just saw is reflective of that. So but back to the resolution, staffs were recommending tonight that the council consider adoption of Resolution six-two-eight-nine, which essentially extends the declaration of the local emergency related to COVID nineteen. State law, the government code requires that this this declaration be continued every sixty days. We've seen this previously. So again, the resolution just extends the declaration, and we're recommending council approval of the resolution this evening. That's all I have, Mayor.
And this also puts us in line for any funds that we may be able to receive. Is that also correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Again, extends the the local emergency, which continues to to make the city eligible for future future funding or funding.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, do I have any questions from council? Mr. Faria? No questions. Mr. Santos?
No questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, funding that we received so far from the state regarding emergency declaration of COVID.
We we've received the CARES Act funding, and we are eligible for some reimbursement as we've gone through the process. I don't have an exact dollar amount. I don't know if our finance director does have an exact dollar amount. But again, this sets us up for not only that that funding that we have received, but potential future funding. I don't have an exact dollar amount at this point.
And that funding that we have received, has that been distributed out yet?
We have received five hundred and twenty thousand dollars of care funding. And yes, we did receive that in its entirety. And so that's been, we did bring that CARES plan to council a while back, and that was used for different things, like we did reimburse some city expenses, but it was also used to promote a residential hardship program and a small business program. We also use that money to to make social distancing, Plexiglas, things like that. But we have received that in its entirety. And then also, the other money that Alex was referring to is reimbursement but from FEMA, which we haven't completely applied for yet because the process is still happening. That we get up to seventy-five percent of expenses if approved for things like overtime and supplies and and equipment. And we don't have an exact dollar amount on that yet because, just like today, we've purchased a lot more hand sanitizer and wipes. And I know that the chief was putting in a purchase for supplies for the jail. So we still, that's still ongoing for us at this point in time.
Okay, so just to clarify, why we're we're making a declaration on the local emergency or extending it is for financial recapture of some of our costs and to help out the community? Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right.
If I might, just to follow up on Finance Director Williams' comment. In your, in typically in other disasters, that FEMA reimbursement process can take literally years. I don't know how long it will take in this circumstance, because this circumstance is very different, but that can oftentimes take years. But that's all I have, Councilmember Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Lewis. Any questions?
I think I think everything's been asked that I wanted to hear tonight. So at this point, I don't have any questions.
Okay, and I have no further questions. So do I have a motion to approve six-two-eight-nine?
I'll make that motion, Mayor. I would like to approve, I'm sorry, approved Resolution number six-two-eight-nine.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
Okay, it's been motioned by Santos, seconded by Faria for the approval of City Council Resolution number six-two-eight-nine. Mr. Faria?
Yes.
Mr. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
And Valalta, yes. Okay, thank you, council. Let's go back to the beginning of the agenda now. And let's see, we conducted the public forum. So I think we're on consideration of approval of consent agenda. Is that right, Director Maloney?
Yes.
Thank you. Consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, and we voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. Tonight, we have Director Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Lawrence's numbers, two-two-four-six-five-six through two-two-four-eight-two-three in the amount of nine hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. Minutes for the November eighteenth, twenty twenty, city council meeting. City Council Resolution number six-two-eight-seven, authorizing a ward of construction contract for fire station training tower improvements project to Burke Diversified DBA Burke Construction Company in the amount of eight hundred and nineteen thousand, seven dollars and sixty-eight cents with a fifteen percent contingency in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and adopt a revised budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one as it pertains to the Fire Public Safety Augmentation Fund Account. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. Is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Mr. Faria? Uh, no? Okay, Mrs. Santos?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mrs. Lewis?
No.
Okay, and the only reason I want to remove C is just to hear a little bit more about it. And what a great thing this is going to be for our fire department. And I want to give the chief and Assistant Chief Struck any time that they need to to tell us a little bit more about this. So do I have a motion to approve items A and B on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second? All right, let's see. I heard Mrs. Lewis first, I think. Okay, so motion by Faria, seconded by Lewis to approve items A and B on the consent agenda. Mr. Faria?
Yes.
Mr. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
And Valalta, yes. Go ahead, Chief Hurley.
Well, Mr. Mayor, City Council, I am extremely excited about this item. Personally, I wanted to thank Chief Struck, Assistant Chief Struck, and Fred from Public Works Director, our Public Works Department, and Mark Faison for helping get this project going. It's been a long process. This was an item that was on our expenditure plan for Measure P way back in two thousand and four. It was on the plan. And it's one of the last items that we have on Measure P to complete. It's a big, it's a big deal for our department. It's a big deal for both fire and police. We'll be able to do all fire aspect training, rescue, confined space, active shooter training. Also, maybe available for Police Department to do the things that they they may need to do. But also want to open it up to our to our area. It's going to improve the training regionally immensely. We have a great cooperation with Merced County, and we train regularly together. And this is going to be a great thing for the West Side. This is a four-story metal structure that is going to allow us to do all aspects of firefighting, training skills, from ventilation to advancing hose lines, rescue, repelling. So when we're all said and done, we can put a little training together, and maybe we can encourage one of you to maybe do a little rappel if if so, if you want to. Yeah, I know, Mayor, you've asked that to pass, and we do finally have this tower being built. And we'll we'll take all the necessary means to make sure that we we're trained right to maybe make that happen. So I'm excited. The department's excited. It's a big, it's a big step for us for the future. Our staff is is ready for this. It's gonna, it's gonna put us, it's gonna make us the best firefighters with firefighter skills that we, you know, we possibly be. It's gonna be a great tool for us and for our community. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. This is a big step. So it all, city staff, finance, city manager, Public Works, and Chief Struck, and our crews that have been helping through the process and in planning this, I want to say thank you.
Chief, Assistant Chief Struck, any any further comments?
None at this time. Thank you, Mayor. Chief Hurley's covered it greatly this evening.
Well, thank you, thank you both. Thank you, staff, Public Works, everyone who was involved in this project. It's 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 great that we're going to have a, you know, a training facility for the county and and it's through the through the vision, the longtime vision of of the of the fire department. Chief Hurley, thank you, and it's coming to fruition, and we really appreciate this. So who would like to make this monumental motion for item C?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to make a motion to approve item C on the consent agenda as submitted.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Mr. Jones, you're second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. So it's been moved by Lewis, seconded by Jones for the approval of City Council Resolution number six-two-eight-seven, authorizing the construction of a training tower, a fire station training tower. Mr. Faria?
Yes.
Mrs. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Hello, real estate agents?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
And Valalta, an overwhelming yes. Thank you so much. And it's a good thing for Los Banos and and our fire department to have the training and to keep everyone safe so that they are fully trained. So thank you all. Let's go on to item seven. Thank you. Let's go on to item seven, public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of adopting an ordinance to amend Title Nine, Chapter Three of the Los Banos Municipal Code regarding agricultural farm worker employee housing. And this is continued from November eighteenth, twenty twenty. Ordinance number one-one-eight-eight, amending Title Nine, Chapter Three of the Los Banos Municipal Code regarding employee housing. And we are going to go to Director Elms, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So this particular ordinance regarding employee housing is an amendment to the zoning code as required for our housing element, two thousand and fourteen dash twenty twenty-three, which was adopted by the City Council in two thousand and sixteen. So within our housing element, we have identified that we will update and amend our zoning code to comply with the Employee Housing Act, which is in accordance with the Health and Safety Code. So with that, essentially, what this amendment does is it provides for housing of six or fewer employees, including but not limited to farm worker housing. In one dwelling would be considered a residential use and treated the same as the dwelling unit. So where all residential uses are allowed, employee housing would also be allowed. I went through the last city council meeting that this was presented. I went through the presentation of the various zones, which this would be allowed. So tonight, I am just going to ask that the City Council open the public hearings, close the public hearings, and adopt ordinance one-one-eight-eight to amend Title Nine, Chapter Three of the Los Banos Municipal Code regarding employee housing. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council before I open up the public hearing? Okay, not hearing any. I will now open up the public hearing on ordinance number one-one-eight-eight. And Director Maloney, have you received any comments?
I've received no comments.
Okay, thank you. Do we need to wait a period of of minutes, or can we just go on?
They were supposed to submit their comments like four o'clock. So I think you can go on.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And ordinance number one-one-eight-eight, amending Title Nine, Chapter Three of the Los Banos Municipal Code regarding employee housing. And do we have any council comments at this time, Mr. Faria?
Uh, no comments or questions.
Okay, Mrs. Santos?
Sorry about that. No comments or questions.
Mr. Jones?
None.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
No comments.
Okay, and I have none. Okay, so do I have a motion? We need two actions here, to waive the second reading and then the adoption. So who would like to make the motion to waive the second reading and and the adoption or to waive the second?
Mayor, I'll I'll make the motion if I may.
Thank you.
So I'll move to waive the second reading of ordinance number one-one-eight-eight as read by title.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Number Lewis, second.
Okay, I have a motion by Faria, seconded by Lewis for the waiving of the second reading on ordinance number one-one-eight-eight. Mr. Faria?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Mr. Faria, go ahead.
Uh, move to adopt ordinance number one-one-eight-eight as read by title.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay, it's been motion by Faria, second by Lewis, for the adoption of one-one-eight-eight as read by title. Mr. Faria?
Yes.
Mrs. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
And Valalta, yes. Let's go on to item B, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of adopting an ordinance to amend Chapter III, Title IX, Article thirty-seven of the Los Manos Municipal Code regarding childcare facilities. Director Elms?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So this particular item, um, was, uh, the first reading was brought to the City Council on November eighteenth, uh, where we held a public hearing, and the City Council, uh, waived the first reading and introduced ordinance number one-one-eight-nine by title. Um, within this, uh, amendment, it's a update to our zoning code to comply with the new state law regarding family daycare homes. This is Senate Bill two-three-four. Um, what this particular Senate bill did, um, was i- it essentially allows for large family daycares to be, it, it requires them to be treated just like a small family daycare, um, which is allowed in any residential zone, and it does not allow the cities to regulate using a conditional use permit. So historically, the city, um, cities were allowed to, um, require conditional use permits in order to, um, be able to regulate certain areas. We used to be able to regulate noise, traffic, concentration, parking. Uh, the state of California with Senate Bill two-three-four has now taken that ability to regulate from the cities. And we are to allow large family daycares in all residential zones, just like we do small family daycares. Uh, large family daycares allow up to fourteen children in the home, um, to be taken care of, um, by a daycare provider, and they're allowed to have an employee, which is licensed by the state of California. Um, so they're not required to get a conditional use permit, and they're not required to get a business license. Actually, the city is not allowed to, um, to, to have businesses apply for a business license. So, um, that's essentially the biggest change in, um, what we're doing to comply with Senate Bill two-three-four within our zoning code. Um, so with that, I would ask that the City Council open, um, the public hearings, close the public hearings, and waive the second reading of ordinance one-one-eight-nine and adopt, um, ordinance number one-one-eight-nine by title. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. If the City Council doesn't mind, I'll open up the, uh, the public hearing on ordinance number one-one-eight-nine, amending Title IX, Chapter III of the Los Manos Municipal Code regarding large family daycare homes. And, uh, the public hearing is now open. Director Maloney, have you received any comments?
Um, I just refreshed my email. I received no comments.
Okay, thank you. I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And Council, do you have any questions? Mr. Faria?
Uh, no questions.
Mrs. Santos?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Actually, I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So how do we, how do we regulate the, um, child daycare? As far as making sure they have all the health and safety items in, in place? I mean, whether it's one child, or fourteen, or twenty, I mean, it's all relevant.
So the state actually, uh, the state licensing has jurisdiction. The city of Los Manos, we do, our, we still have a fire inspection, and, and our fire chief can speak to that. We still go and inspect for
Okay.
health and safety of each of the units, or the homes. Um, state licensing requires that, and that's required in order to get your license through the state. But the city now, we do not have any regulatory power like we would through a conditional use permit where we could regulate parking, noise, um, those sorts of activities. Um, and we used to be able to do that with a business license as well, and, and that's now prohibited.
All right, thank you.
Who? Mrs. Lewis? Any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. And I have no questions. Okay, so with that, so we need, uh, uh, ordinance number one-one-eight-nine. This is the second reading and an adoption, two motions. Uh, who would like to make that, to waive the second reading?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number one-one-eight-nine.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. It's been motion by Santos, second by Faria for the waiving of, uh, waiving of the second reading of ordinance number one-one-eight-nine. Mr. Faria?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
And Valalta, yes. Go ahead, Mrs. Lewis.
Uh, that would be me. Uh, I would like to make a motion. No, no worries. I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number one-one-eight-nine.
Thank you. And who was the second? Was it Mr. Faria or Mrs. Lewis?
Faria.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Faria.
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been motion by Santos, second by Faria, uh, for the adoption of one-one-eight-nine. Mr. Faria?
Yes.
Mrs. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
And Valalta, yes. Okay, consideration item eight, consideration approval of designed, build, delivery method be used for the new Police Department and Facilities Project. City Council Resolution Number six-two-eight-eight, authorizing that, one, the designed, build, delivery system be used for the new Police Department Facilities Project, and two, amend number one of our Vanir Construction, uh, Management Incorporated Professional Services Agreement, VSA, be entered into, and that the City Manager shall execute said agreement, and the Public Works Director, City Engineer, will administer said agreement. And three, the adoption of a revised budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, as it pertains to the Police Department Capital Improvement Fund Account. And who's going to take this one? Director Faison?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, this is the next step, a very big step on, uh, getting a new Police Department Facilities Project. Um, we actually are asking to, for Council to approve this resolution with these three items. One, that we use a designed, build, delivery method. Second one is that we go into the Second Amendment on the Vanir Construction Management, PSA. We, that PSA is already in place. This is just the, uh, Second Amendment to finish out that, uh, uh, and that is, uh, amendment not to exceed, uh, two, two million five hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the scope of work, which extends to the end of construction. Uh, and the last one is to amend this year's fiscal budget, uh, by three hundred, by, uh, increasing the appropriation amount for expenditures by three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in the Police Department Capital Improvements Professional Services Account. Uh, it was, we had budgeted money in there, but we hadn't budgeted enough. We didn't believe we'd get this far, so that's a positive item. Before I get into the staff report, we do have, um, three, uh, very important people that are here. If you have any questions? From Vanir, we have Jerry Avalance, who's the principal in charge of this project. From Vanir, we also have the project director, Scott Murphy. And, um, as I explain a lot of this stuff, it, it has come from them. So some of the explanations, if you want more, can, uh, can certainly be asked of them. And of course, uh, our honorable Gary Breezy, the Police Chief of the City of Los Manos is here to also, uh, promote and discuss the project if, if so needed. Um, now, I'll give you a, a brief background, uh, and it, it's, it's mainly, uh, just some, some dates, but they're very important. Uh, this current facility of Fifth, uh, nine forty-five Fifth Street has been used for fifty-one years by the Police Department. Obviously, we're at the end of its useful life, especially with the, uh, existing police staffing that we have. So that's the main reason why we're heading towards trying to get a new police facilities. Some important dates is, um, way back in January seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, uh, the Council did, uh, agree for a purchase sales agreement for three point six acres located at eleven-eleven G Street. This is directly west of the new County Courthouse and south of G Street. It borders G Street. So that's a three point six acre parcel of land. October seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, we awarded the Indigo Hammond Pyo Architects a needs assessment, uh, Professional Services Agreement, which they, which on September eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, we actually came back to Council with a resolution to accept that needs assessment report, which, uh, covered all the Police Department needs, whether it was just a facility or, uh, animal shelter, it covered it all, and that did, that was presented to you. A very important date was April twenty-first, twenty twenty, when the purchase of the land was actually recorded. So that's when we, uh, took possession of that land. Um, on May twentieth, twenty twenty, uh, we awarded the PSA, uh, the one that's associated with this amendment to Vanir Construction Management Incorporated. At that time, it was, it was awarded for the entire project management of the construction management of the project, but specifically for Phase One, which was a, about a sixty-nine thousand dollar, uh, phase. And it was called pre-design services. And another very important date is October twenty-first, twenty twenty, just very recently. The Finance Director presented the financing plan for the Police Department Facilities Project, and the City Council approved Resolution sixty-two seventy-seven approving that plan. This, with the total estimate for the project cost as set by that plan was set at twenty-four million. So, um, as you go further in this, Van- Vanir did finish Phase One of the pre-design, uh, of their contract. And what this was is, this was to look at the needs assessment building and to relate it to actual what we could do in the field. The needs assessment, the total project cost was thirty-four million. So you could see when we're only budgeting for twenty-four, when you finally got that, that was quite a bit extend, extended. Quite a bit above our ability to fund and finance. That involved a thirty thousand square foot building. So, uh, over several meetings, it must have been four or five. Vanir did meet with the Police Department staff mainly, uh, to go over the to- to get the total project cost down to twenty-three to twenty-four million. We wanted to match the funding policy with what the building could do. And this is mainly, um, utilizing space better, eliminating some of the, uh, hallways, uh, making it more efficient, looking more in detail about how many officers and personnel would be in the building, looking at the site work, exactly, did we need exactly that many parking spaces? Things like this. And they were able to do a really excellent job in, and with the, working with the Police Department staff, the administration staff, and getting that project to the twenty-three to twenty-four million complete project.
I have a question mark, if you don't mind, please.
No, no, of course not.
Thank you. Um, I was wondering, I, I know you said we've taken a closer look at our staffing, and I'm sure it includes future staffing, so we might have a few extra offices and, and cubicles, I suppose, right?
Yes, it does. And, uh, exactly how much further, I'm not sure. But yes, it does have future staffing, uh, capabilities, uh, built into it. There's no question about that.
Thank you.
Uh, but the total bill, the total building square foot to do this went from thirty thousand down to twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty. So that was the, uh, of course, that's a major cost savings, and that was able to get that price down. Um, that was the, the, one of the major goals of that Phase One pre-design. The other major goal, there was others, but the two that I'd like to talk about, was to compare the different building methods available to the city to proceed forward. Uh, and, and to get a recommendation from Vanir and staff to back to City Council to proceed forward. Uh, the first one was, that they looked at was the design bid, bill. This is the typical, the ti- very typical thing. You go out, you hire an architect, architect designs it, you put a bid project together, and then you go out and you are, and you go for a bid for a contractor. This involves two bids, the architect and the contractor. And the architect is the representative of the city, represents the city. This particular style that is, is, is the norm in, in the industry is very prone to claims because the actual design person is a separate contractor than the, than the contractor is. Um, sorry, I have trouble turning the page here. The other one, the second option that we looked at was actually a design build option. Now, this is where a, a team of an architect and a contractor team comes together under one contract and under a very strict specifications set up by the construction management firm and the city working together, uh, and a strict budget. They get together and propose the project and what it's gonna come through with. So it's really, they're building to a price, and they're building to a level of specifications. Let's say there's an air conditioning unit, and it goes from specification of one to ten. The project management team with the city will specify, we need a, a HVAC system that's an eight, a minimum of an eight on the specification level. They have the right then, and this is what, to, to design one of those, supply one of those, as long as it meets that spec. Uh, we don't, you don't specify what type, what brand, it just has to meet that spec. Now, one thing, uh, and these guidelines are definitely, it's called in a bridging document. These guidelines, the project management team with their hired architect put together. And it's a bridging document that gives very detailed specifications to these teams. Now, one thing that happened that I, I think people that were here back would remember, was it ten or eleven year ago, years ago, we did the, we built the community center, and at that time, it was recommend, it was suggested maybe design build could be used. At that time, it wasn't allowed for Public Works projects for state and local agencies. Since then, there's been several laws that have allowed this. And the most current, most recent one cleaned, cleaned up the previous laws, and Senate Bill seven eighty-five, which was so- signed in late September of twenty fourteen, which allows state and local agencies to use the design build method for projects in excess of one point zero million dollars. So this definitely is that. And now that is actually written in the Public Contract Code in the sections twenty-two, one sixty to twenty-two, one sixty-nine. So we def- it's, it's a pathway that's definitely used now. There's, there's advantages to it. Um, you, you know, and we'll talk about those advantages a little bit later. Uh, and so it is, uh, compared to when we did the community center, it is a recognized legal way to, uh, build a project over a million dollars. The third option was looking at a modular design build. This would be the same way where we do, the bridging documents would be done. We would give that to a modular designer, um, and they would build that offsite. Uh, it, that, there's two contracts, because when you deal with a modular builder, uh, they don't do site work. So you'd have a separate site work contract, and you'd have a modular contract, so, contracts. So you have two, two, uh, contractors to, uh, deal with. Uh, it also does not lend itself to a sophisticated design. They bring this back to their yard. They're definitely con- constr- uh, constrained to certain, uh, geometric configurations and, and, and issues like that. So it's not, doesn't really lend itself to sophisticated design at all. Now, at this point, um, uh, through Vanir's recommendation and staff's recommendation, we are recommending that we do go through the design build phase. We think it, it, uh, it, it's a very higher-end product than modular, and I'll go to the modular comparison first. We do have a design flexibility over modular. Uh, there's two contracts, uh, for modular versus one that we would deal with. Um, and a lot of the collaboration is lost. It, it goes, it bids out like any normal bid, it goes out to the lowest modular company. There is not any input, from very little input afterwards, because it's, it's modular. You don't have a lot of input after the fact at all. So you do go out to the lowest bidder. Now, over the standard design bid build, there's several reasons to go this way, we think, for this particular project. It saves an overall time, and it's, it could be up to six months. Actually, we think it could be a minimum of six months, because the site work can start early on this project, because it's all one team, and they can start early on the project. There is a potential cost savings, because you are working with a design team, and they, yeah, there is a, and they can work with the project management team. They do have that versatility. You do have a guaranteed maximum price. That's part of what you propose, that's part of the proposal you send out there. They have to meet that price. Now, th- that doesn't eliminate change orders, but these change orders may be dictated by the, by the owner, not by the contractor, not by the, the design build, uh, build team, because they would, they had specific specifications to design to. And then you hand-select the design build team based on an RFQ, RFP. So you have that ability to hand- So you have that ability to hand select someone who you believe will give you the best product, not necessarily the cheapest product. Uh and also a very important thing is the errors and omission, the professional errors and omission claims are essentially eliminated. Because the designer and the contractor are working as a team, they're responsible for their own errors and omission in that case. Um there's also in, in the, there's a few more reasons and, and there are. I have a email from Scott from veneer that gives a few more reasons uh that we're recommended design build. Um the second part of this, of what we're asking for in the resolution tonight uh is amendment number one. And if you recall, when we did the PSR, we said there would be three amendments and the first one we did already. The second two have been combined, so the amendment number one is going to be the, the amendment that takes us all the way to the end of the project as far as the construction. And I have a long list in the staff report of what it includes, but I can go over five or six of these just in, in small detail. Uh bridging documents, which are the documents that get us from the uh uh project management firm to the design build team. And this amendment number one, I will say, is based on a design build option because there is a difference a little bit in cost, but. Um uh and the pa- and the pa- and they also will, part of this, the project management team will uh. Veneer would be responsible to put in the design build package and process. Uh to work on the consultant selection, to look at some middles, any change order processing. And the big one here, it's just one line item, but it's awfully big, it's the inspection services, which is, it's over two, a year and a half, it's a, it's a large part of this project. And, and the record drawings. Now, this whole amendment is, the price is two point five, two million five hundred seventy four thousand two hundred and fifty nine. Now, this is about, when you compute this out based on the project cost, it's ten point seven percent of the project budget. This particular budget and doing research on this, they, it usually runs between nine and twelve percent in our valley. So they're in, they're definitely in the middle on this. Plus, we had them add several things to this that is not, not a typical uh thing that we would want them to do. One is uh special testing allowances put in there. An annual maintenance and operation analysis will be ready by the end of the project that covers all fifty years of the building. So an O and M manual on how to, on how to run it, how much it will cost and what needs to be maintained. We also had added the actual civil engineering surveying tasks to their, to their um scope. So these things are not items usually included in, in that ten point seven percent, but in this case, we have asked it, they have included. Now, one of the important things I'd like to go over with is one of the processes that is part of the. Uh a part of this amendment number one and will be done in this fiscal year is called the procurement process. This is actually the procure, procurement of the design build team. And how this works is an RFQ is, is released and it's a five or ten page document when it comes back. And it just qualifies teams to participate in the RFP. You look at the RFQ, it's, it's a, like it's a smaller document and you, we would be looking for three or five teams to actually go into the actual RFP. Now, the RFP here is, you know, could be up to fifty pages long, it's very detailed. And it costs between twenty and thirty thousand dollars uh to do these documents. What we would be recommending that's done industry wide is we would put a stip- a stipend of ten to fifteen thousand dollars. In the RFP, this is just the people that would ball over the RFP, the three to five teams. Uh that they would be paid that to produce the RFP. There's several reasons, if you don't do this industry wide, a lot of the better uh design build teams will not even participate. There, there's nothing that happens, they just will not do it, they will, they will, they'd like to get, you know, up to half of their money back if they don't succeed. By the way, and this would just be, let's say three teams would compete, the team that actually gets the contract would not be given a stipend, it would just be the other two. Uh but the other more, the other very important thing about this is. The proposals, what they propose in their, in the proposals, when you pay the stipend, becomes part of the project, you own it. You're allowed to use that with the successful firm and so you're actually buying a professional product at the same time. You can't do that without doing this. Now, cities have done it both ways, you could do it with a stipend or you can do it without a stipend. Um just going over this with veneer, they definitely see a huge quality drop if there's no stipend involved. So we are recommending doing the stipend for the final uh three to five teams uh minus the uh, the one that gets awarded. We are recommending doing that and the budget has been budgeted to take that into account. I know that's something that we haven't done in the city before, but it's uh, it's definitely an industry uh standard that, that will get us. The kind of team I believe that will, that will build us the facility we need. Um and, and I'll opens up for questions in a minute or anytime if you need to. But I like to explain the fiscal impact a little bit because I'm reading it and I wrote it, it's a little confusing, which I apologize for. But the, the actual amendment number one is, is, it's like I said, two million five hundred seventy four thousand two hundred and fifty nine. The amount that we believe will be done in fiscal year twenty twenty one is seven hundred and ten thousand dollars of that amount. Um and currently, we have an existing available amount already budgeted of three hundred and thirty seven dollars. So if you subtract the two for this fiscal year only, we're asking for a budget amendment of three hundred and seventy three thousand dollars in order to get the seven hundred and ten thousand dollars done this year. The rest of the contract will be budgeted in twenty one, twenty two and twenty two, and twenty two, twenty three in the normal budgeting process. Um that's really the three things that we're asking for at this time, it's, we do have people here that can help address some of this stuff and Gary probably want to give a, a. A nice presentation of his own, I think, how exciting this is. Uh this is a very exciting uh process, this will start immediately, if you see the timetable. By the, we, we should have the procurement process of getting a design build team on. And I believe it's July, August and that, I believe, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's, it's that quickly. Uh and uh that's really an exciting thing and to tell you the truth, getting the budgeting uh policy approved really opened the door for this and uh we appreciate that. Uh that's my presentation at the moment, thanks.
Okay, chief, anything, Matt?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the work, Mark, but I'll reserve any comments at this moment and allow you to have the floor.
Okay, all right, so let's uh, let's do this, council, if I might, I'll open the public hearing. And then we'll bring it back to council level and see if there's any questions from council. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing.
Yes? There's no public hearing.
Oh, there's no public hearing on this? Okay, oh.
No, there isn't, I don't believe.
Okay, no, no, you're right, you're right. Okay, so uh, so all right, we're at the council level, council, are there any questions, Mr. Freya?
Uh no questions, right.
You, Mrs. Santos?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
No questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis?
No questions.
And I have no questions, it's been thoroughly explained. We are, we are very proud to be part of another great project that's uh, that's uh, that this council uh is going to be able to approve hopefully and. And uh, and we can go forward. So uh at this time, uh who would like to make this other monumental uh, uh, uh. Putting forth the city council resolution number six two eight eight, who would like to do this?
Council member Lewis.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number six two eight eight as read by title.
Do I have a second?
For you.
I'll second that.
Okay, I heard Mr. Freya first, okay? So I have a motion by Lewis, seconded by Freya for the approval of city council resolution number six two eight eight. Authorizing the design build delivery system. All in favor, Mr. Freya?
Yes.
Mister, Mrs. Santos?
Yes.
Mister Jones?
Yes.
Mister Lewis? Oh, excuse me, Mrs. Lewis, I'm Mr. Jones, Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, and Valalta is yes, overwhelming yes and uh unanimous decision. Okay, go for it, get it, Bill.
Thank, thank you very much, council and mayor.
Well, thank you, very easy decision. All right, let's go on, we, we've already um, we've already completed item nine, let's go on to item ten. Consideration of council member request regarding homeless sheltering plan during the winter months. And Mrs. Lewis has her name here, Mrs. Lewis, would you mind if I took this topic?
Uh, no, I don't mind, I was gonna make the statement that uh since you had been working with the uh board supervisors on this, that I was gonna turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, thank you and uh so what I'd like to tell you tonight, council, is that. You know, Alex has been working, our city manager has been working really hard, both of us have, in order to secure the migrant center. Out on Henry Miller and Mercy Springs to house homeless during the winter. Because we can save lives, right now, we have a uh, a, an encampment that's not the best for homeless. And uh the city of Merced is getting a brand new navigation center at the cost of six million dollars. That, from money that's been uh, been procured by Adam Gray. Now, the offshoot of this is, is that the um, the supervisors are going to have to staff this facility. At a cost of one point three to one point nine million dollars a year. So we have been working on this uh migrant center idea for a long time and it met with resistance, resistance, resistance. And we finally got to go ahead for partial use of the migrant center. And uh Alex, how many buildings is that that we will be able to use?
I mute myself, it's my understanding that there's a relationship between the housing authority and state of California housing community development. Which, which I think is part of the reason why, why it's taken so long to get us to this point. Uh but it's my understanding that HCD has provided a waiver for use of up to fourteen, not, not the entire facility. But up to fourteen units in the facility, mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Alex. So that fourteen units, depending upon the size, can house. Uh you know, a number of homeless and keep them warm during the wintertime. Of where the encampment now with uh, with the tents and the structures is, is, is basically makeshift. And so, but here's, here's the problem in council, here's where I need your help. And I need your help in, in, for direction uh to uh the city manager to, to uh, to formulate a letter. And, and let them know that, you know, basically, we can contribute some funds. Within uh the, the scope that, that, that we can contribute. But the bulk of those funds are going to have to come from Merced County. They are housing uh homeless, which will house up to one hundred and fifty to two hundred homeless at the navigation center. And the county is providing all the staffing, which is one point three to one point nine million dollars a year. Well, I'm asking for a lesser equivalency, a lot less, to uh, uh, to staff our facility here in Los Manos. With some help from Los Manos. And maybe um Adam Gray can secure some CARES money along with Senator Caballero, who I have also contacted both of those. But right now, I'm asking for your support for the city manager to draft a letter and, and send it to uh the uh. Uh the board of supervisors to get help to open this uh, this navigation center on the uh west side. So we can save homeless lives by not having them, number one, be out in the elements. And be in a facility that uh, that can house them and have, safely house them. So that's kind of what I'm looking for tonight, council, and I hope I can get your support. Comments? Mr. Freya?
Mr. Mayor? Uh yeah, I'm very, very supportive of this. Also, uh would we be able, would we want to be talking to MCAG about the bus? To get maybe some uh transportation for these people to get in for services. Uh from the, from the facility into, you know, into town?
Well, i- yes, because, you know, we were told and uh, 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 city manager Tarazas and I attend these homeless meetings. Either virtually or uh, or in Merced when we were able to, to do it pre-COVID. And, and we were told that the, the navigation center was basically for the Merced area, or Merced people. And, and they didn't want to transport homeless uh all over the county. And, and so uh, Merced would get this navigation center and then we would put up encampments. Uh around the rest of the cities in the county and that just does not seem right. Uh you know, th- these individuals need some help and we have a beautiful s- facility out there at the migrant center. And it can be used to house the homeless, but then all of a sudden, everybody puckers up when you start asking for money. And the west side deserves a fair shake in order to save the lives of the homeless on the west side. So, you know, I, 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 sometimes I, I just get a little upset, well, you know me, it's more than a little upset. And, and it's just, it just, it just bothers me that, that. Lost Manus is, is not included in, in basically these decisions when we're trying to help and we need help. So with me, it's uh, it's, you know, Lost Manus comes first and it's always been that way, but. But I understand there are other needs in the county, but, but you know, there should be some CARES Act money and some, some housing money because there is money. Provided to find alternative housing for uh, for homeless people. And, and so uh, but yet, then they had to quarantine at another area in Merced, then they couldn't get over there because of the, you know, because they didn't want to leave Los Manos. So this way, it's the perfect solution where we can take some of that quarantine money to buy a, a motel and hotel rooms. And we can then use that money towards uh the facility at the, at the migrant center. And maybe get some, some counseling facilities out there and, and some, and some, some help for the, the less fortunate. And, and hopefully save some lives because of the cold weather. So uh, so thank you, Mr. Freya, for supporting that and, and that's kind of basically where I'm, where I'm at. So I'd like to hear from uh, from other council members, Mrs. Santos?
Thank you, mayor, um I personally think this is a wonderful idea. Um and uh, I, I mean, I, I know earlier in the, I, I know we're gonna be stopped to look into it and everything, but. Um I had personally spoke to um uh Mr. Mitchell earlier, the one who had a public comment. And I would love to see how that works, I'm just making sure we're teaching good habits as well. Um but yeah, I, I really love the idea, so thank you.
Thank you, and then uh, and uh, and the city manager Tarazas can also talk to that Mr. Mitchell. And see if those dollars can be incorporated within uh, uh, within this project too, Mr. Jones?
Sorry, I thought my mic was still on, I have no comment on this.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lewis?
Uh yes, and I want to thank you and the city manager for looking into this and hopefully. Uh the county will find within themselves to support the west side in accomplishing this task. Um and in regards to Mrs. Johnson Santos' uh idea about education and teaching sanitation. Um getting services out there to people, if this comes to fruition, I, I would think would be part of the services that they should receive. And, you know, learning how to take care of themselves in, in this environment that we live in today. So again, thank you for, for taking the time to look into this and I do support a letter being written to uh the board for the services.
Thank you, you know, and we're not, we're asking for a handout, not a handout, because, you know, we have some money, but, but yet, we can't support the total cost of this. And, and it's going to be a stretch for us, but, but we're willing to, to kick in some funds. And uh, and uh the city manager will meet with uh, with Director Williams to talk about, you know, what's, what's fair and equitable and what we can kick in. Uh but, but, but thank you all for the support uh to uh, to draft the letter and uh. And to, to give city manager Tarazas uh more clout in going forward with this to make it happen. So thank you so much, uh uh city manager, any, any, any final comments?
Uh no, no other comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you, so you have your direction. All right, thank you. Okay, all right, so let's go on to item uh number eleven, advisement of public notices. And we have no reports this evening and let's go on to item twelve, city manager's report.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor, um it's, one, just really. I think significant milestone for, for the organization. I think significant milestone for, for the organization and I think, um, for Mark. Um, and I don't want to put you on the, on the spot, Mark. I, I, I know your camera's not on, but, um, I'm gonna gush over you a little bit, Mark. Sorry. Um, I, I think, and, and well, to- tonight is actually Mark's last council meeting working for the city of Los Manos. Um, I, I don't know if Mark has contracted with the number of hours he has spent in council meetings, but I'm sure it's significant. Um, I, I think one of the weird things we do as public officials, when we retire, we think about those things, about how much time we've spent in council, council meetings, but, uh, Mark's contributions to this community have been significant. Um, and I, and I know, uh, in the, the time I've been here, um, I've enjoyed working with Mark. Um, and I've worked with a, a number of engineers in my career. Um, thank goodness for engineers. They are, they are special people. They are unique people. Um, and, and, and thankful, thankfully, we do have civil engineers, but Mark has contributed significantly to this community. Um, I think, um, his efforts will be long lasting. Uh, the projects Mark has worked on will, will continue, uh, beyond, uh, Mark's tenure here, which is another thing. I think we as civil servants, uh, uh, it's why we do what we do. We, we like contributing to communities. We like making communities better places. Um, I know civil engineers like building projects, so, um, Mark's done some significant stuff for this town. He's initiated some significant projects for the community, like the police station. Uh, Mark i- is really been kind of the driving force behind the police station, uh, project up until this point. Um, so it, it will be good to see that move forward, good to see that project built. Um, and Mark's impression on this community will be long lasting. So Mark, thank you. Uh, you're not gonna turn your camera on, I guess, Mark, but anyway, thanks for your service to the community. Uh, it's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you for what you've done. I know I've thrown a lot at you. Um, I know I made some, some changes in the way we do things here. Um, you, you stepped up. Um, you stepped up to the plate. You took it on. Um, and, and, you know, we're really here where we are on a number of these projects because of you. So thank you for that. Um, it's, it's been a pleasure working for you. I know you will be missed. I know the department head team will miss you. Uh, we will miss your, um, dry sense of humor, your engineer's humor. Um, I know I will miss that. Um, so, and I know the other department heads will miss that as well. So, um, anyway, thank you, Mark. It's been a pleasure.
Congratulations, Mark.
Mark and I had the same.
Thank you, Alex.
Mark and I had the same hair color when he started. We have the same hair color now. So. All right. Thank you, uh, uh, Alex. Uh, let's go on to item 14, city council member reports, and we'll start with Mr. Jones this evening.
No report other than I just want to say thank you, Mark, for all your hard work and answering all my tedious questions that I've had. You're gonna be missed.
Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And additionally, Mark, I want to thank you for your services and time, uh, to the city of Los Manos. But more importantly, enjoy your retirement. That's, that's the big thing that you've waited for, I'm sure. And, uh, now's the time to enjoy that. It's a wonderful thing. Um, just, uh, a couple of other things. Um, I, I think probably, um, I'm not sure if I did or not, uh, asked for an update on, um, the cart washing, whether or not the contracts have been submitted to the city and what those contracts that they have agreed to do and, and, and how often they're going to be washed, which I think our ordinance said at least a minimum of one, uh, once a month. So if, if you can have staff bring an update at the next meeting about who submitted an agreement and who's doing the process, I would appreciate that. And then, uh, my last item is, uh, last week I had requested that Republic, uh, come before the council, uh, to give us an update on what was going on in regards to our services. And I, I know that a letter was sent to them. Um, so I'm going to restate my request again today that I would like the management out of Fresno to appear before this council uh, to give us an update on what they plan to do and how quickly they can get it done. Um, the letter states they have until the end of January to come up with a plan. That's too long. So I want to hear from them now. I think the council would like to hear from them now. Uh, so if we can schedule that for the next agenda item on, um, the, the, I'm sorry, the next, uh, council meeting, uh, have it as an agenda item, uh, I would appreciate that. And that's it for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, okay, let's go on to Mrs. Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mark, I was waiting on a tearful speech or something. So me and the mayor weren't the only ones, but, um, thank you so much for being one of, one of the first couple of people that, uh, really welcomed me into the city. I really appreciate it. You definitely made me feel more comfortable coming in when I didn't know what the heck I was doing. So thank you for that. And like, like everyone has said, please enjoy your retirement and you're, you're well deserving. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Faria?
Uh, thank you. Uh, yeah, we've accomplished a great deal, uh, with your excellent work, Mark. You will be sorely missed. Um, and, uh, thank you so much and enjoy that well-earned retirement. Uh, also I'd like to echo, uh, Ms. Lewis's request for, uh, Republic Services to address the city council. Um, we need to know what's going on. We've had numerous situations where things aren't getting picked up, things aren't being done correctly. So I would like to have, uh, I would like to echo her sentiments there and her requests. Um, and, uh, everyone, don't forget the Christmas, reverse Christmas parade this Friday. Um, you can drive through the parade route and look at the exhibits. They're gonna be along the, uh, along the road. Thanks, everybody. Have a great holiday season here. And I'll maybe see you Friday night. Thanks.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Faria. Okay, the, uh, Mr. Faria had, uh, had brought this up, uh, the reverse Christmas parade. And, uh, council, uh, if you would like, we will not have a, a, a fire truck this year because of the, of the closeness and, and COVID-19. So, uh, what, uh, what the, the, uh, the parade organizers are asking is that we bring our individual cars and we will park them one in back of the other. And, uh, and if all five council members would like to come, uh, you, we, uh, we will be in our individual cars and then we will be part of the parade, but it'll be a static part of the parade. And then we can, uh, wave at the people going by, which I, you know, it's, everyone's trying to make a Christmas out of, out of a, uh, uh, on, on something that, that it, that just isn't that pleasant with COVID-19 and the sheltering. So y- you know, if my hat goes off to the, to the individuals, the organizers, the people that are still trying to move ahead and make this, uh, as normal a Christmas that, uh, that we can possibly have. So, uh, if you would like to, council, please bring your vehicles and we'll probably be parked on Sixth Street. And, uh, we'll have a, a place for all five vehicles on the council. And, uh, we would love to have you if you would love to participate and you will be in your individual vehicle to, to stay safe. And, uh, and, and I think being part of, of this Christmas parade is more important than ever to, uh, uh, you know, for the, for the public to let them know that, uh, that, you know, we're just trying to have some type of normalcy in, in something that is not very normal right now. Uh, the downtown looks absolutely beautiful with the, uh, with, with all the lights, uh, that the, uh, downtown association has, has put up. And thank you, Mr. Jones, for, I heard about your donation. Thank you. Uh, of all the lights that you donated for the, uh, for the downtown. Uh, Brett stepped up and they needed something and, and he did it. So thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, so, you know, come down, uh, council, come down, uh, public and, and let's, let's, let's make this as normal as possible. And Mark, after 10 years, working together, you and I started together and, and, you know, I thought we were gonna finish on the same day, but that didn't work. Uh, I'm gonna be here a little bit longer, as is, uh, Mrs. Santos. And so, uh, so enjoy your retirement, please. And so with that.
But, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before you do that, and I, it, highly unusual, it's probably a violation of the Brown Act, but I'll, I'll go to jail for this one. Uh, does Mark want to say anything or do we want to put Mark on the spot?
You know, I, I just didn't want to embarrass him, but if he'd like to chime in, we, you know, we would, we would, we would love to have him say something. But he didn't turn on his com- his camera for about three, uh, council members, so I didn't want to push it.
Yeah. I, I was just getting embarrassed. Um, you know, I'm so lucky. At the end of your career to have the best job with the best people is unusual. The people I work with, the department heads, my department, you are all wonderful. We've gone through so many changes as the department heads and staff and we've stuck together. And on most days we give good service to the, to the citizens. Sometimes we don't get there, but we keep trying. I just want to thank everybody. It's been such a pleasure. So, um, thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for your service and, and we are, uh, we're, you're, you're gonna be missed. And, uh, we, we just, we're just hoping that you have a happy retirement because it's, it's well deserved. And, uh, thank you for making Los Manos your home. I hope your kids are doing well and, and.
They're doing great. They're doing great. They have a really good, really good place to grow up. So.
Good, good. Hey, you know, we're really lucky. Bill Vaughn hasn't chimed in. So, you know, we've been, we've been doing pretty good.
Let's not push, let's not push our luck. I think you might be mad at me. No. Love, Billy. He's great.
Okay. Well, eh, w- with that, thank you all. Uh, thank you, staff. Thank you, council members. And, uh, hopefully we'll see you on Friday night for the reverse Christmas parade. And with that, I'd like to, unless there are any other business before the city council, uh, last chance, Mr. Faria? Any, nothing? Okay, Mrs. Santos?
No more comments. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
And I have nothing else. Good night, everyone. Meeting adjourned at 5:58 PM.